Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the May 21st, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting. Could I have a roll call, please?
All five selectmen are present, as well as town council and our town administrator.
All right, pledge of allegiance. Let's see. How about you, Cheryl? No, of course you can't.
I have a weak thing. I'm not really sick.
I'll do it. Okay, you two are in there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, announcements. Alan.
Toby Hospital Guild. They are selling raffle tickets for $200 worth of scratch tickets for the emergency department equipment for sale. It's available at for sale at Toby Gift Shop, starting May 30th. That's all I have on that.
All right, Jim?
Yeah, that's a good idea. You'll hear the voice from heaven.
Place in hell, actually.
Yeah, Land Trust will be doing some trail clearing down here on Hathaway Road property. So anybody who wants to get out at 3:00 to 5:00 o'clock tomorrow, feel like getting out and doing a little hulking on a little bit and get some sunshine and fresh air, hopefully the sun will be out. That's going on back across the street. Just passing the Meannett River, heading from Maine down over to Meannett. There's a little two-car parking spot on the right side, but across the street, is that Windermere?
Yeah, I think that's right.
Windermere, you can park along Windermere. 3:00 to 5:00. Thank you, Paul.
Right here.
Yeah, if you're in Onset and you haven't done so yet, your district election is still on until 8:00 o'clock at the VFW post off of Onset Avenue. Up for grabs are positions on their prudential committee. That's a contested race. Moderator, that's a contested race, and water commissioner, which is not contested. So if you haven't done your duty, get down there, vote wisely, my friends.
Mary?
Yes, please be advised that notice has been given that a community outreach meeting for a proposed recreational cannabis multi-use establishment to be located at 2,400 through 2,402 Cranberry Highway where H.M.A.S. is scheduled for Friday, May 31st, 2019, at 3:00 p.m. The meeting will be held at the Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Room 320. The proposed facility will feature a recreational cannabis micro-business, a private members-only social consumption lounge, and a craft cultivation site. There will be an opportunity for the community to ask questions at this event.
Okay.
Yeah, I forgot to mention that the Redevelopment Authority will be presenting the redevelopment strategy that we commissioned. This is an opportunity for people to come and take a look at what's been recommended that the town and the Redevelopment Authority pursue as far as priority areas in town, what the recommendations from the consultant were, and so on and so forth. This will take place two different times, May 30th at 7:00 p.m., and then Saturday, June 1st at 10:00 a.m. Both occasions are in the Town Hall auditorium, so please come, and we want to hear what you think of the strategy, and we want to hear your ideas.
Okay, Alan has an issue with cannabis posting, so I want him to be able to...
I just want to go out to the public. I'm going to do it quickly as I can. When the Cannabis Control Commission had the initial setup, it was for the medical was set up originally first, and the medical was originally from the Department of Public Health. Then the Cannabis Control Commission came in, and it basically took over and decided that medical could get retail. None of us knew that at the time. The planning board had done a location for medical only being in the institutional area, and the reason why we have an issue today is because we had no idea that medical and retail could ever be combined. So we were kind of, we didn't rush, but we basically put things in place without knowing there was going to be a problem. The facility that we have on Lower Main Street, they've been looking for new location. The problem is they can't move out from where they are unless retail and medical are available in the same zone. So there will be an article at town meeting in the fall to take care of that, so hopefully they can move to a place that works better for everybody. This particular issue here, I have a problem with. My problem is simple. The state, a couple days ago, announced that they were going to look at, through the Cannabis Control Commission, 12 test modules, if you want to call it that, located in cities, not in towns, they said in cities, for social clubs. They were going to go ahead and make some rules for delivery. The idea of delivery was that there's a question whether at Wareham facilities could deliver outside of the town property lines. So that's something that we understood originally, we could go anywhere we wanted to, now we may not. The problem I have right now is that we're going to have someone come and talk about a social club, smoking marijuana stuff. There are no rules, there are no regulations, there is nothing. We're going to do this in town property as if the town is, not sponsoring it, but the town is okay with it or whatever, and I'm afraid that what's going to happen is when people come to this and ask questions, nobody can give a straight answer, because there is no answer. So I think we're premature in letting this happen at all. I just want to go on record, completely being a publicist.
Okay, next I have a few announcements. Okay, so the 18th to the 24th is National Safe Boating Week. Just a reminder for people to always wear their life jackets and respect the water. You know, that's a big deal. As you well know, it's a lot of fun to be out on the water and have a good time. But let's do it safe so we don't have any incidents this year. Let's try to have an incident-free year, that would be a wonderful thing. Also, the Wankeco Rotting Gun Club Fishing Derby is coming up on June 2nd. To register, go to the Wankeco Rotting Gun Club Facebook page and click on the link that says "Register," and you can register to go to the fishing derby. Last but not least, the new floating docks have been installed and are about 95% complete. They will be ready officially by Friday and about 25 days ahead of the schedule. That's one thing. Robert B. Hour Construction did a fantastic job and was an absolute pleasure to work with, according to the harbor master. So that's good that they're going to be up and running before Memorial Day, that's awesome. And of course, that cleans up the whole thing that's on the waterfront right there, too, as it gets done. So that's awesome, and I want to thank everybody for getting that all done.
Just one other thing, some Veterans Day services on Monday, the 28th, at various locations around the town. You going to cover that? Alan will cover it. Sorry about that.
It's okay. Finish.
We'll get to that. Okay, all right. Announcements, citizens, you know what? Let's go down and do the proclamation, because that way we get some people waiting for this. So why don't you come down, and we'll do the Race Amity Day proclamation. How you doing?
Good evening, sir. Good evening. I'm Nicholas Dix. I am the president of the Global Education Club at the Wareham High School.
And I'm Matthew Stanton. I'm in charge of the JROTC program at Wareham High School, and I'm in here in my capacity as the Global Education Ambassador Advisor at the high school.
So why don't you tell us what's going on?
So we are here to seek your signatures for the Town of Wareham Proclamation for Race Amity. Nick has come to give you a little bit of background on the efforts of the Global Education Club this year in terms of race amity.
Sure. So our first involvement began this past October, November, and there was a meeting with a community group that is dedicated to race amity. And students from the Global Education Club were invited to come. So me and a friend went, and they showed a quick, about 20-minute documentary about the history of race amity. But the biggest takeaway I got from it was the discussion we had afterwards, where my friend and I, we were surrounded, you know, about six or seven other adults, and we just had a conversation about, you know, race amity and its history and how it can be implemented now. And so just this past month, I believe it was in April, we set up a race amity display in our high school. So the community group came, and they had posters and trifles, all with information, again, about the history, both present and past people who have been involved in race amity, what even race amity is. And along to, going along with that, we had a presentation from Dr. Smith. He's, I can't remember his title, he is the...
He is the Director for the National Center for Race Amity.
Yeah, so he came and he gave a presentation to all the juniors and the seniors in the school. He talked a little bit about himself and the company that he's part of, and then he showed a video, and he also, we went on a live video call with one of his colleagues who was able to talk to us about it as well. And overall, I mean, the reception for it was great, especially in, you know, in a town like Wareham that is so diverse. It's nice to have this sort of respect for one another and also an understanding that, you know, in Wareham, there's not as many issues, at least in the high school, as far as race goes, but you know, you don't stay in the Wareham High School for the rest of your life, you know, you go out into the real world, and you want to make sure that the people keep this idea with them, you know, this value of race amity, of friendship between races, and not letting it, you know, get the, you know, not letting it, not thinking about the differences, but rather thinking about the similarities.
Thank you. That's...
So what we're requesting is that the Town of Wareham proclaim the second Sunday in June Race Amity Day.
Okay, awesome. Well, I want to see if anybody wants to say anything. How about, anything else?
Yeah, I make a motion.
Okay. All right. Jim, you have anything?
No.
Got to pull the microphone to you, by the way. I just got a, I just got a text, Jim, you can't be heard at home, so.
Oh, so if you got a text, I'm in trouble. Great thing you're doing. I believe the Historical Society had an amity presentation, I don't know if it was the day before, the same thing. And thanks a lot for stepping up and doing this.
Of course.
Yeah, I know that earlier this year, one of our hockey players experienced some issues at a hockey game. So, you know, these issues are important, not just for Wareham, but for schools and towns and societies all over the country and all over the world. So this is a really important thing that you're doing. Thank you for it.
Of course.
All right, I guess I want to get to this, right? Okay, a motion made by Alan is seconded by Mary. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 5-0-0. We have a proclamation. And Mary, you have to read that, and you'll...
All right, Town of Wareham, 54 Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, a proclamation. Whereas Wareham supports the great seal of the United States of America, which bears the inscription E Pluribus Unum, which translates from Latin to "Out of Many, One." And whereas the greatest asset of the Town of Wareham is its people. And whereas the Town of Wareham is comprised of multicultural, multi-ethnic, and multiracial citizens. And whereas friendship, collegiality, civility, respect, and kindness are commonly shared ideals of the collective citizenry of the Town of Wareham. And whereas the National Center for Race Amity has invited communities across the United States of America to join in introspection and reflection on the beauty and richness of the diverse peoples of this great nation while reaching out with a spirit of amity towards one another annually on the second Sunday in June. And whereas H. 2745, Chapter 163 of Acts of 2015 of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts establishes the second Sunday of June annually as Race Amity Day. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Wareham Board of Selectmen do hereby proclaim the second Sunday in June to be Race Amity Day, and urge all the citizens of the Town of Wareham to take cognizance of the event and participate fittingly in its observance. In witness, therefore, we, the Wareham Board of Selectmen, have heron to set our hands and cause the official seal of the Town of Wareham to be affixed on this 21st day of May 2019.
Signatures.
And the signatures. Board of Selectmen, Patrick G. Trappiano, Chairman, Mary Bruce Clerk, Alan H. Slaven, Peter W. Titlebaum, Esquire, and James Manise.
Awesome.
You take it from...
All right, so we're probably in our picture. Yeah, everybody's smiling. You have to... The proclamation, you can pull that open right there.
Tell us one.
Everybody fit in. Come on in. Might have to move somewhere out against the area.
Yeah, he's kind of psyched out. That's bad.
Thank you so much for...
Good job.
Next up, we have a public hearing. In accordance, it's actually a dog hearing, that's right. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 140, Section 157 of the Massachusetts General Laws, we notify the public hearing will be held before the Board of Selectmen on Tuesday, May 21st, 2019, at 7:15, regarding a dog owned or kept by you, meaning Brandon Higgins. The Board is, please find attached the complaint by Mabah and so on and so forth. The hearing takes place here. Please, somebody move to open the hearing, please.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Jim, seconded by Mary. Roll call. Alan?
Yes.
Jim? Mary?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Patrick? Yes. Okay. And for the purposes of the dog hearings, we're going to turn this over to Peter to run the hearing, okay?
Okay. First off, would everybody who intends to give testimony be scared of? And raise your right hand. And shout for me. Aye.
Aye.
Say your name.
I, Brandon Higgins.
Do solemnly swear to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Do solemnly swear to tell the truth, nothing but, nothing but the truth, so help me God.
You guys don't spend much time in court, okay? It's probably, it's probably a good thing. Okay, please be seated. If we could have the animal control officer read into the record the complaint itself. We'll start it, too, but...
That's fine. Oh, no, I just read the opening for the thing. She has to read the complaint.
Yep, the report.
I'm going to apologize, because I do have a pretty bad cold, so...
Would you like some water?
I have a drink, thank you. So just kind of bear with me. And I had an extremely busy day, so I just got this ready two minutes before I came up here, so I apologize. I hereby make complaint, hereon the dog's owned and or harbored by Brandon Higgins is a danger by reason of vicious disposition. On April 25th, 2019, I spoke with Jennifer Camara, who reported that on the previous day at 3:45 p.m., she saw her neighbor's, Brandon Higgins' dog, described as a Belgian Malinois Shepherd named Peach, running loose. While she attempted to secure the dog in the owner's backyard, it attacked her. She stated it had bitten her left thigh, resulting in four puncture wounds and several bruises. She had seen the dog loose prior, it witnessed it chasing people, so she was trying to prevent an incident and secure the dog, which is familiar with the victim, for the owner who, when it turned on her. I apologize. The dog owner admitted the dog had bitten the neighbor when the neighbor, Jennifer Camara, was attempting to secure the dog after it got loose. This complaint is made under the penalties of perjury, and signed by myself, Cheryl Anne Gorbette. Dill, the animal control officer from Wareham.
Okay, thank you. At this point, if you two identify yourselves...
My name is Brandon Higgins, the owner of the dog.
And I'm Jennifer Camara, the neighbor.
Okay. It's nice to see you came together and you're sitting together. You know, I discussed this with the chairman beforehand. One of the interesting things here is, under our dangerous dog bylaw, if a dog bites what's considered a, quote, "willful trespasser," and that doesn't mean somebody committing a criminal trespass, or breaking into a house, or doing something like that, it means if a dog bites somebody who intentionally comes onto the dog's property, we actually, under our bylaw, can't find the dog dangerous, per se. However, we can conceivably find the dog at risk. And so the conditions that would typically be imposed on an at-risk dog would be something along the lines of, when not under direct control of a controlling person, that would be the owner.
Yes, sir.
Or a house guest who was taking care of the dog, or somebody in charge of the dog. The dog shall be contained within a building vehicle or secure enclosure, so, you know, obviously not running loose. The dog may only leave the owner's property accompanied by a controlling person on a leash of not more than four feet, having a minimum tensile strength of 300 pounds. For something like a Belgian Malinois, you're going to want a, probably something like a leather lead, like a police-style lead to a... Who's ringing?
That's Alan.
The other issue is, you know, the animal control officer can recommend microchip identification or behavior training from a trainer. I don't know that either of those necessarily are things that the animal control officer would be seeking.
To be honest with you, I wasn't going to pursue that at this time. This is one of the lesser cases that we've tried. But I did speak with several of the neighbors just after this incident was brought to my attention, and several neighbors who preferred to remain anonymous and spoke highly of the dog owner, did report that the dog has been seen on numerous occasions off property, off leash. So knowing the dog has the ability to bite, know it bit her, even though she was just trying to secure the dog and the dog was familiar with her, and knowing that we have had a bit of a history there, I felt that at the very least, we want to make sure that this dog is deemed at risk and secured on that property and not off leash.
Can we get some stipulations?
Well, let's ask, let's ask the person who was the victim, so to speak. Is there anything you would like to add to what's been described about what happened?
Like, what do you want to know? Because...
Well, is what the dog officer, yeah, the animal control officer read into the record, pretty much what happened? You observed the dog running loose, said, hey, I'm going to get her home?
Yeah, well, I was in my backyard with my dogs, and I heard the neighbor, so I'm like, all right, I know those dog barks. I went out front, and I saw it was Peach and Daisy. So I'm like, come on, guys, you got to get back in the yard. And they were really scared at that time. So I don't know what happened prior to me going up to them, so I don't know if somebody scared them, or if they were just frightened because they couldn't get back into the yard. But I was looking, trying to figure out if there was a gate open or how they got out. So I saw Daisy was sitting in the corner, just shaking. So I'm like, you're okay, you're okay. And that's when I turned to go to the other gate to call them, when she just bit me.
Yeah.
So it wasn't anything vicious, they were just both really scared.
Kind of strange.
So, so, so the dog bit you?
Yep.
Do you admit that the dog bit her?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's a stipulation right there, that you're saying, yes, it did happen.
Yes.
You're saying the dog, do you stipulate that the dogs were loose?
Yes, they were out front, yes.
The dogs were loose?
Yes.
Do you, can you also stipulate that the dogs have been loose on multiple occasions?
They have been loose before, yes.
Okay. So, so basically, that's where we're at?
Yeah.
I don't see how we can...
Yeah, I don't think we need a whole bunch more testimony here.
A whole bunch more on this.
So I guess at this point, I would ask the animal control officer, would you be content with a finding that the dog is, that the dog Peach?
Yes.
Who I guess...
Peaches.
Wasn't, Peaches, okay. Peaches, we deem the dog at risk, and we put conditions number one and two, which I read previously, keep the dog contained...
On leash.
And on a leash when you take her off the property.
Yes, sir.
Are those the two stipulations you'd like to see along with the at-risk designation?
Exactly, and then after two years, if we haven't had any issues, we can just...
The dog's kind of on probation for two years, if this is what the board decides to do.
Yes, sir.
So let me, let me, just for you, your side, okay? I want you to understand that things change if a dog continue to get loose.
Yes, I definitely understand that.
That's a, that's a clear violation of what we're going to, what we may put in place, and you've got to make sure that that doesn't happen anymore. Whatever you got to do, if they're getting under the fence, you're going to have to put in something, whatever it takes, you got to make sure they stay on the property, okay?
Yes, sir, and I actually have pictures that I have already bolted, I have swing gates for my side yards, and I have bolted them shut, so that way they can't move anymore.
That's awesome. That's what we need to hear.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, dogs are pretty good with gates.
Obviously, you have apologized, I'm assuming, to this young lady?
Yes, sir.
And you've accepted?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, awesome. All right, so let's have a motion to close here.
I have a question first.
Okay, you got a question? Okay.
Basically, I'd like to know, so the public knows, what does "contained" mean in this particular case? What kind of fence...
Well, this says an security enclosure in the car or in a house.
How tall is that?
My fence is a six-foot-tall fence right now, sir.
And there's solid, secure fence, or just the...
It's a chain link, and I also have a wood panel fence attached with it, sir.
Sufficient?
Basically, the way that I have it written is that they're humanely restrained at all times in such a manner as to prevent the dogs escape from the property. These dogs escape from the property, we'll be back here with a secure locked pen with a top and a bottom. So I have a feeling we won't be back here.
I just want to make sure the fence is secure. I don't want to actually have the opportunity to come back again.
Right.
I agree. I agree. We've been working together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you know, not just this particular instance, but any time you're over the dogs, they shouldn't be under control and on leash. It's just not this particular instance, it's anyone who's out with their dogs, it should be on a leash if you're out on the road. And dogs like to travel. I have dogs. So if they don't keep them contained, they like to move out. I don't know about the electronic fencing, I don't use that. I just use rigid fencing. But that's just not for everybody. Dogs should be on a leash when they're not in their own yard or home.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else?
Motion to close.
Okay, motion made by Mary to close, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? Close, Alan?
Yes.
Jim? Mary?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Meself, yes. Motion closed. Okay, can, we have a motion?
Yeah, I move that we deem Peaches the dog as an at-risk dog, and the following conditions be imposed. When not under direct control of a controlling person, the dog should be contained within a building, vehicle, or secure enclosure. The second condition, the dog may only leave owner's property accompanied by a controlling person on a leash of not more than four feet, having a minimum tensile strength of 300 pounds.
Okay, motion made by Peter, seconded by Alan. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you.
You will receive a letter with our decision within a few days. And again, if the dog keeps her nose clean for a couple of years, then the at-risk designation goes away. That doesn't mean we want to see you back here in two years in one day.
You won't see me, sir. Trust me, you won't see me, sir.
And thank you both for your conduct, and obviously you've spoken about this before you came here.
Yes, sir.
And we're appreciative of that fact. These hearings can get pretty contentious sometimes. Nobody wants to believe their dogs are, quote, "bad dog," and sometimes the truth stings, but we're glad you've taken steps already.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Next up, we're going to go back to citizens' participation. Anybody here to speak to us this evening? See none, we'll move on. Board comments? Alan?
I'll finish up. Jim had started. Veterans Day, of course, is Monday, this coming Monday. The events that we do is pretty well standard every year. There's a little glitches here and there between the two groups, hopefully they'll resolve them someday. It'll start at 8:30 at the Town Green, it will end up at Town Hall over here. They'll stop at both cemeteries, I think Bessie Park, actually, I'll go all the way down to Onset, make the, I forget the name of the cemetery, down at Long Neck and all the areas. There's about eight stops total. I'd appreciate it if people, if at all possible, to show up and show their respect for the veterans, except, especially the ones that gave their lives. Onset had their town meeting last night, it went in less than an hour. It was smooth and peaceful. I was expecting to have interesting things, it didn't happen, so I was kind of disappointed. But that's the way it was.
Just as an aside, I don't think they exist to entertain you.
I was hoping for the best. And that's really all I have for right now.
Okay, Jim?
We probably should have done this under, well, Saturday, I went over to...
I'm gonna move that mic closer to you, Jim.
Yeah, I was making a call.
Somebody can hear you at all, so move it right into your mic.
All right, Saturday, I went over to Zero Waste Facility with Mr. Sullivan, a town administrator, for the, for the grand opening ribbon cutting, and took a tour of it. Interesting, a lot of moving parts in the machinery, and, you know, it's supposed to take the raw trash and both, both residential streams and commercial, separate them. There's gonna be a number of people hired to go along with the automation, to pull stuff out, so I wish them the best over there. And who knows, maybe we'll be doing business with them one way or the other as we go forward, individually or as a municipality. It's about all. Thanks.
Okay, by the way, it's Memorial Day. Alan, you said Veterans Day, but it's okay.
I'm old, I'm spacing.
No big deal. Yeah, hey, it's probably something I'd do exactly. Mary?
I have nothing.
Peter?
It's not an announcement, but I do have a question, and perhaps Alan knows the answer. Is the veterans' train going to be running again this year?
I have a call in through Tom Caher, who runs the Cape Cod derail, to find out if it's coming. Usually, he calls me every year and I make the arrangements. So when I hear, hopefully tomorrow, if they are gonna run the train, I'll get ahold of the fire and police departments for the honor guard to see if I can make that happen. And I'll put it out, hopefully, on the town website.
Yeah, perhaps you could alert the reporters as well, yeah.
But as of right now, I can't give you the answer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next up, appointments, reappointments and interviews, please.
First thing we have, we have three constables. If this, you want to hold off on this till later or just...
If we change the thing, we're not gonna change the appointments of these.
Okay, so I move that we appoint Michael DeSesso, Gregory Kamen, and William McCusker to the constables for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2020.
Second. Motion made by, by Mary, seconded by Alan. Is there any discussion? I know Jim wants to talk about this later, and we will.
We have it on the agenda.
And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All abstaining, it's unanimous.
Abstain.
Abstain?
I abstain, yeah.
Okay, so 401, 401. Go ahead, cemetery commissioners.
Okay, we have two people up for cemetery commissioners. I see Sue is here. Kathy Byrd is not here. Sue, do you want to come up and talk to us? Have anything to say? You have some friends, I think they have some nice things to say about you.
Did they come to support you?
Yeah, I think they did.
Very nice. In that case...
We're not coming up. Sue, is this a reappointment or is this your first time?
What's that?
This is a new appointment, right?
This is, yes, this would be initial.
All right, great. Tell us.
Well, thank you for having me. My name is Susan Atkins, and I have been involved with going to cemetery commission meetings. I also spoke on the town meeting floor when the cemetery commissioners were rewriting the bylaws of the cemetery rules. And at that time, I had a lot of concerns. We did get, I put a motion on the town meeting floor to have it...
Further study.
Put for further study, which was done, and then it was passed. At this time, there is an opening on the commission, and I have decided to apply for it after being approached by quite a few residents. I want to really be part of the solution, not part of the problem, and it saddens me when I go up to the cemetery daily to see the state of it right now and to see the state of the residents of the town of Wayham. People are very distraught. People are up there and they just don't know what to do. They're starting petitions. We've had news, Fox News down here interviewing people, and I just think that we need to open the door to communication with the residents. People feel like they're not being spoken to and advised as to what's being done, and it's very disheartening up there. And I just would like to try to bring us all together so that it would be peaceful up there, and right now, it isn't.
Okay. I want to just say one thing, just so you know, and I don't usually say things like this, but, you know, there were public hearings. They were, people could have come, they were posted, they were put in all the places and all that, and the town meeting voted for it. And so, we, we enforce regulations, we're required to enforce the regulations that the town meeting votes for. It's what we do, you know?
Oh, and I understand that.
People make those decisions. So I just want you to understand that, yes, I heard there's a lot of people upset, I've seen it, I listened to it, there's lots of people upset about what's going on up there. But they have to realize that these things have processes, they go through whatever, and, yes, we can change it. Everything can be changed with the right process and the right thinking. And I just don't want people to understand, I want everybody to understand that, you know, nobody did this to try to give everybody a hard time down at the cemetery or anything. Yeah, the cemetery commissioners tried to make it easier for the people caring for it and the perpetual care and all that kind of stuff that has to happen. They tried to do that. It seems like some people are upset by it. I get that, okay? But in the same instance, we've got to try and come up with a solution, like you said, and I appreciate what you said, by the way, that you want to be part of the solution and not the problem. But I know that people are listening out there, and I listen to all the stuff, I've gotten lots of the calls, I've listened to the emails, and I feel bad for everybody who has a problem, every single one. But I want people to understand at the same time that we didn't do this. We didn't just all of a sudden make these things up. This went through a long process. Remember, it went once, went back to further study, had another hearing, had a lot of people...
And I understand, and I don't think they intentionally did it, but I really feel that the communication, I think that when people were, we're told every year that we're gonna have the spring cleanup. Well, the spring cleanup, in the 10 years that my husband has been at Center Cemetery, has been that you go up there and you make sure all your Christmas decorations or anything that is overgrown has been, the man next to my family's plot, he had a beautiful little holly bush, and they just ripped it right out of the ground. And it's been there for 10 years. And that, there's certain things that if they just talk to people, I will tell you, another citizen said to me, they had no money to buy a headstone for their relative. So they had the Chapman Gleason and Cole's name tag there, okay? And it has been there since the day their relative was buried, which has been almost five years. And in the bylaws, it says that they would be removed in a timely fashion. Okay, we understand that. But this was never approached with this family. They went up there right after May 3rd, and the girl says to me, she goes, I don't know where my brother is. She said, because his head thing was right here, the name tag, and it was removed. So now, she's distraught trying to figure out where her family member is. And so I just feel that the communication and the way that it was done, I understand that it, I don't think it was intentional. I know that there are certain things, but I don't think that the townspeople knew when we, when they put out that we're gonna have a cemetery cleanup.
Well, you have this woman call my number, you can get it from the selectman's office, and I will get her a flat stone to put on that marker.
Thank you.
I'll pay for it personally.
Thank you, I will tell her that, I will.
So that she can have a stone to mark that.
And as I say, I just really feel it's communication is one of the big problems that the residents are feeling and that I'm feeling, so...
I'll be happy to do that. If somebody can't afford it, I don't think they should have a piece of cardboard or whatever up there. I'll be happy to get her at least a flat stone for now until they can do something.
Thank you, I will pass that on to her.
Just tell her to get ahold of me and I'll set it up. All right, all right, next, anybody else, any questions?
Yeah, I just want to say, thanks for applying, and I read your narrative, it was attached to the application. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I represent the cemetery commission for the board, and I was at the last meeting and, sorry, and both applications were approved.
Okay, good. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just wanted to say with regard to the flat stones, unfortunately, under the current regulations, there's no provision for any decorating there. I have had conversations with people who had put plantings up and were upset that the plantings were removed. Also, people that had small monuments that they had put there to mark. One of the interesting things that you learn is that, you know, people who can afford it typically get a headstone, people who can't afford it will get a flat stone because that's obviously a lot less granite, a lot cheaper, and it doesn't require as much stonemanship to make. And one of the concerns, and I did, I did bring this up with the director of municipal maintenance, is that it's not allowing people to have some small area either on one side of the flat stone or perhaps a perimeter around the flat stone. Does seem to be a bit of a, unintended, but it does seem to be a bit of a form of economic discrimination. I think the people with the flat stones...
They get a foot, I understand it, on each side, on each side as wide as the stone is, according to the rule.
But a flat stone, you can have nothing. If you have a flat stone, you can't have anything.
Twelve inches in front.
Twelve inches, okay, in front.
That's right.
I knew there was 12 inches involved someplace.
It's in the front, yeah.
So they do have some space where you can put stuff, I guess.
So, so in that sense, I think the regulations could possibly be expanded to allow those people some means to...
Yes.
To put some plants, small plantings in. One of the issues you run into in cemeteries everywhere is, though, is the idea of, you know, having perennial plantings that do grow, do get into the way of the people trying to maintain the cemeteries versus the annual plantings where people go out on, you know, for example, on Memorial Day or Mother's Day or whatever and decorate the stones. So I don't think that, I think the, the regulations as they were passed weren't a lot different than they are in a lot of places. I just think that because there had been so little being done, even under the prior regulations as far as removal of larger things that were growing up and getting in the way, that when they went out there and kind of did a clean sweep, it was a big shock.
Yes.
And I think that's, that's a big part of it, that if people, you know, 10 years ago had been told, hey, you know, you gotta, you gotta get rid of that shrub, it wouldn't have been such a big deal as to go out there and find, you know, all the shrubs gone and that sort of thing.
And, and another thing that people have brought to my attention, which if I do get on the commission, I will bring it up with the other commissioners, but the timing of the commissioners' meetings. Residents feel that they have their meetings at 8 o'clock on the third Thursday of the month, and they used to have them at 3:30 in the afternoon when people could go when they were getting out of work, and now people feel that they changed that time because they didn't want people to come to their meeting.
Yeah, I don't think that's the case. The municipal maintenance department workers are typically out the door at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. I believe that they work a seven to three day, five days a week. So I think that was the reason that they shifted the meetings in the mornings, because remember, they have one of the full-time staff people there, I believe, taking the minutes during the meetings. That used to be the practice, I know, a few years ago, which was the last time I was at a cemetery commissioners' meeting for anything. So I think that's probably the reason for it. It wasn't, it wasn't to try to do it under the, you know, the cover of darkness.
And as I say, they just said that to me, you know? I told them that I would be their voice piece and that I would...
That's great. And I want some, it's good that you're gonna be their voice, and that's a great thing. You know, there's nothing wrong with that. You know, but these things do take on a life of their own, like that they're, where some kind of cynicism, cynicism of, you know, yeah, they, they did that so we couldn't go to the meeting, and they do this, whatever, like under the cover. Look, we live here too. You know, we have to do, deal with all the same stuff you deal with, you know? It's, it's people here, people in the cemetery have to do exactly the same thing. I have lots of friends of mine that are buried in those cemeteries, very good friends of mine, and I visit on occasion. But it's, it's, you know, it is not anything we try to do or be mean or anything like that. Please understand that. I hope everybody out there understands. We don't do anything secret, we don't do anything behind the doors, we don't do anything... Now, the other thing was the water, remember the water thing? Well, we got a huge water bill because they left the water on. I mean, remember, we, we're not the water department.
Well, they were, they didn't leave the water on, there was a break in the pipes.
We, we...
There was some vandalism of kicking off the pipe pad, the...
I think that was at Ag, I believe that was at Agawam, but I'm not sure. But the big bill, the bills that I received from the water department were not from Center Cemetery, they were from Agawam.
Well, they're, they're all part of what we have to take care of.
But I think you're gonna, I will tell you, I think in the future, that you're gonna see a motion on the town meeting floor to have the town provide domestic water back at the cemetery, because people are talking about getting a citizens', you know, putting a article with citizens petition.
We have water there, don't we have the boughs?
Yeah, but they're empty half the time.
Well, they, they...
You have to bring water from home.
We need to make sure they stay filled. I mean, it's as simple as that, so you have water. I mean, that's how we tried to keep control of it. The bill was absurd.
I would recommend going to the water districts and doing petition for them to give free water to the cemeteries.
And that might be an option as well.
A wonderful choice.
Yeah, that'd be a great idea.
They ask us for freebies all the time, by the way.
That's a great idea.
They ask us for freebies all the time, by the way. The districts do, both of them.
You know, we're their biggest user, let alone when something happens that, you know, there's water being...
Yeah, why aren't we negotiating a discount with them?
Throwing away.
All right, I'm gonna interrupt the gentleman. Because I'd like to make a motion to appoint Susan Atkins to the cemetery commissioners to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2022.
I'll second that.
A motion made by Mary, seconded by Jim. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I hope, I hope you enjoy your time there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
It's gonna be a tough one, though.
Thank you for having me.
Hard work.
It's gonna be hard work.
Good job.
Right, one more, right?
All right. This one's for Kathleen Byrd. I would like to make a motion that we appoint Kathleen, reappoint Kathleen Byrd to the cemetery commissioners for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2021.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by...
I'll second it.
Alan, I see Alan raise his hand. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you so much.
These terms, just for explanation, I had them changed at the meeting because everybody was basically running out at the same time.
Oh, yeah.
So I restaggered them so that every year, one person is up.
Well, that makes sense anyway.
I'll say it now.
All right, next up, application from Paul Rose for three one-day liquor licenses to be held on Saturday, June 8th, 2019, from 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Sunday, June 16th, 2019, from 6 to, from 12 to 6:00, and Wednesday, June 19th, from 4 to 9:00. Now, these are the ones that we get every year in one form or another from these guys. This is out at the pavilion, if I'm not mistaken. And by the way, they know the rules about...
Is there a description of what each event is or not?
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, I was in the agendas.
Yeah, it's in there.
Twenty percent.
It's in there.
It's in there? Okay.
Well, is this for the license for the...
For the VFW, I'm sorry.
For the VFW Pavilion.
This, right, in the pavilion. There's three dates. There's no description of what they're all for.
Uh, one's a baby shower.
One's a baby shower.
One's a baby shower, one's Saint Anthony's celebration, and one is employment barbecue for Citizens Fred Hoek.
Good.
You don't see the forms.
They were always...
It wasn't attached. No, it's not.
It wasn't in the packet?
No.
Well, it should have been.
It was just the three dates.
Okay, well, it should have been in the...
Which I didn't have a problem. It's nice to know, you know, what the events are and why they want to do it. Not that I'm against them at all.
I'll make sure you get it. It's in the, supposed to be in the packet, but I'll make sure you get them. I don't know why they missed that page, but typically they do. They put that in the packet, so. All right.
I make a motion that we accept...
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Application by Mrs. Sullivan, Mr. Sullivan and Mrs. Sullivan. Come on down.
Constables, I didn't...
You're gonna change your hours of operation for Sullivan's, DJ Sullivan LLC, DBA Sullivan's Wine and Spirit, 260 Marion Road. And the change of hours are?
The change of hours are... I have no idea. Where is it?
It's gonna be on the form.
On one of them. List of actual hours of operation, May 15th.
That's page.
This one?
This is page with the change of hours.
It was an attached page, yes.
Wait a minute. Is it this one?
Yes, it was in the new hours.
It's in there somewhere.
It's in here somewhere. We've got lots of pages. You guys, you're very thorough with the paperwork.
This is the new hours there, right?
All right. The new hour is gonna be January 1st through March 31st, Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. April 1st through September 30th, Monday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And October 1st through December 31st, Monday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Is that your motion?
Sorry?
Uh, yes.
Do I hear a second? Okay, motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's unanimous, 500.
Thank you.
All right, now, this is an application from Wareham Oyster Festival, Inc. for their 5K road race. Now, just so everybody knows, the road race goes from the fire station down towards the green, over to Gibbs Ave, down Gibbs Ave to Route 6, down Route 6 to High Street, down High Street to Wazeko, back out onto Main Street and back to the fire station. So that's the route.
Yep.
Okay?
Okay. It looks like we have the old insurance form.
Right, so we'll have to make sure we get the right one.
So we, I'd like to make a motion to approve this permit with conditions of getting the new insurance...
Binder.
Binder.
Okay. Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Okay, we'll make sure that we get that. Next up, approval of the seasonal recreational soft shell clam areas. By the way, this is something we do every year. It's boilerplate stuff. It is in order to protect the fisheries is why we do it. And Gary was willing to come and I told him he didn't have to.
Okay. So how do we do this one?
So make a motion as written.
Do you want me to include all the areas?
No, you just say as written, as presented.
I make a motion as written to accept the Director of Natural Resources' plan for soft shell climbing.
Okay, motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
We should have that posted somewhere for the areas that are open.
We'll get it up on the website. We'll put it out in the various posting areas as well so that everybody knows.
Thank you.
It's gonna be on the pier. It's gonna be on the pier. It's gonna be outside the office here.
It'll be by the clerk's office. We'll post it in all the usual places to make sure everybody knows.
It should be all the boat ramps.
And we'll get it on the website, too.
That's one thing I don't think...
So we'll take care of that. Constables, now the constable process. Jim, this was your baby, so why don't you tell us what you had in mind?
Yeah, I just, I have a problem appointing people, or reappointing people whom I know nothing about and there's no, the application, it's just, you know, some people gave a, you know, just give a one-line request to be appointed and I'm like, who is this person? Two or three of the people do a nice job. I don't know about the vetting, who's doing the vetting. Nobody's signing off that has been vetted, you know, as far as quarries in the last year or anything else as such.
Quarries.
Also, well, I don't know about the reappointments and nobody's signing off on it. I would like to see that beforehand, before I can approve someone to be reappointed. I want someone to sign off and say this stuff has been done. Additionally, there's fees to be paid for services rendered, which I think is 25% of a set fee that the state determines. My understanding, only a couple of people have been paying that. And so Mr. Sullivan said he would, he said, I miss that and he says, I'm usually, he's right there after it. So I think he'll be looking into it.
How in Lord's name did you miss that?
So processes need to be put into place.
You're losing your touch?
Yeah.
I've got Sal going after it.
And I'd like to see a vetting process and someone signing off on beforehand. I think we have 22 constables in the town. That makes it a little more cumbersome for people to track how many services have been done. Some of them do a lot of services, some do nearly none at all. So I think it's time we just take a look at it and bring it into this current century.
Yeah, and some of the...
One that charged us to do a couple warrants a year ago, posting the warrants, should have only charged us 75%, but...
Well, you'll look at the fee structures as the state sets up. I'm not sure what they charge, but it won't solve the crisis, the financial crisis in town. But any little bit helps, you know? So...
One of them works like through the sheriff's office and stuff, too. I know that.
Well, yeah, sheriffs do a lot of service or process.
One of them, I know of.
I suppose we shouldn't be encouraging people to go out and do more things. It'll get them summonses to court and so on and so forth, but the more of you misbehave, the more money we're gonna get, it sounds like.
Well, again, some people do a lot of them. Some of the constables do a lot and some do very, very few.
Yeah, some of them don't show up at all.
And so, I mean, do we need 22? Is there a process or a way to reduce that number? People are just, I mean, are they gonna be doing services or they just want to be on the list to do them?
We need to do a little work on this, I guess.
Yeah, I think we talked about the reduction before because it does seem like a lot. We did that with tow companies before.
It's heavy.
Yeah, and you know what? We should be doing as if they're not doing anything and they're not paying any money and they're not doing any hypothetically, then what do we really need them for or what do they need us for?
Right.
Well, maybe that's what we have to start looking at. Maybe we need to do some homework on this, Jim. I think maybe you're right.
Well, yeah, and I had spoken to Mr. Attorney Bowen about this and he sent me some things that other towns have done. I did a little research online with the Mass General Laws, spoke with Attorney Titlebaum and also our town administrator, Mr. Sullivan, about it. And Janet, she handles a lot of stuff, as you know, in the Selectman's Office. And she was the one that said, you know, a couple people send us checks and that's about it. But what, you know, and how do they account for that? What are the services? Different services are different things. So there should be a process, you know, and you're supposed to either pay quarterly if it's over $500, if it's under $500, it's once a year, I believe. So we gotta put these things into place.
Let's write a policy.
How can you keep track of this, though, if this is, some of this stuff is, isn't this violating some people's privacy?
No, they don't have to tell us who they serve. They just have, they just have to say executed service on such and such a date with the fee amount, and that's adequate. And the other thing, too, is service of process is not a secret activity. You're being typically summoned to court.
That's why it's gonna break it down into categories and stuff like that.
Well, and the other, one of the things we could do is we could simply say to them that if you do no services, then we're gonna drop you, you know? We're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna appoint people that don't do anything.
And Selectman Munez was right in that we're not gonna recreate the wheel. We can steal some really good ideas from other communities.
All right, so we'll do some homework on this.
Yeah.
All right, so...
Does Attorney Bowen have anything to add to this? Could I ask him?
Does.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We should swap mics. I think you've got Derek's old silent on. Jim had asked me to take a look at some of the, what some of the different communities were doing, and there were a lot of interesting examples out there. And I think the one that, well, I won't speak for him, but the one that to me looked, you know, kind of interesting for a community of our size was the one that Foxborough uses. But in terms of Mary's point and, you know, how do we know how much they're making and so forth, one of the communities I looked at, I think it was Somerville, they actually had a reporting sheet that you had to hand in periodically that listed the types of service that were made, the amount of the service, and then, you know, 25% that we were supposed to get. It was really detailed. I was surprised at what we had. And maybe we have a lot of constables applying here because you make 33 and 1/3% more if you work in Wareham. I don't know.
But, you know, if I may, it should be a requirement that you do fill out a form such as that, again, either quarterly or yearly, depending on how many services you're rendering. And you have to list what the services are and what the amount was and send a check in with it. If you don't, then you're not gonna be reappointed. That's it, period.
Yeah, no, I think that's definite. I didn't realize that there was supposed to be a fee. I don't think anybody ever, we haven't, nobody ever paid any attention to that.
Good catch.
It's a good catch. I'm sure Mr. Sullivan was happy as hell when you told him.
He was a little disappointed in himself, I think.
After you wiped, after you wiped away the tears from all the money we didn't get for him.
Yeah, you liked that one.
But thank you.
All right, so we'll put something together. We'll work on that, okay? And we'll come up with something and we'll bring it to the board. We'll have to have, we'll have to build a policy, I guess.
Yeah.
Board policy.
Constable appointment policy.
I think that should work pretty well.
Yeah, and I mean, another...
The cap. That's what we'll call it, the cap.
Foxborough's, that's 10, a maximum of 10.
Well, we're more interested in the Foxborough.
Well, I don't think we need more than 10 anyway, when you come right down to it.
No.
And I'm betting that the majority of these people that we appoint do nothing, at least not in this town.
By the way, it's not a fee they turn in. You're probably...
Yes, if you look, some of them, some of them do say how many services they performed, but some of them don't.
Okay.
You know, some ate, some were over 100 and I said, well, they're pretty busy.
Well, we'll have to come up with, since these people aren't used to this, we'll have to come up with something that gets sent out to the constables prior to reappointment next year.
Yeah, I think so.
Well, yeah, if that's how you'd like to do it, I mean, if that's gonna be the pleasure of the board...
Well, as far as getting the money, they should be, they should just be notified of the statute that says, hey...
That if they don't, then they're removed from the list.
Well, let's see what we come up with. We'll come up with something.
Yeah, they go on their own association website.
I think it says right on, I don't know, page one or page two of their own website.
States it.
Pay.
That's right. They know what's going on. They know exactly what's going on.
What is it?
Just say.
No, that's for me. I'm taking that to somebody. I'm just, I'm gonna sign it and then I'm gonna take it to their, they have an event and I'm gonna take it there and present it.
Oh, okay, good.
Okay. There you go. We'll get to that in a minute.
Okay.
We'll get to that, I promise.
Any other business?
Yes. Okay. Any other town business not anticipated last 48 hours?
No.
Alan?
Is that for all of us?
No. Mary?
No.
Okay, so let's pull that thing out because I don't think it's on the agenda. Okay, so I have here a certificate of congratulations for Justin Chau Schulter, who is going to become Eagle Scout. He's gonna have an Eagle Scout thing. So what I want us to do is to sign it and I'm gonna deliver it to his, I forgot what they call it now. God, I should remember this. It's an Eagle Court or something like that where you go and they do the whole thing, presentation and all that. And I am going to go and present it. Now, it happens to be in a cushionet, and I gotta tell you why. It's because the Boy Scout troop that was in Wareham has been disbanded. And kids are from here went to a cushionet, to another one. I'm going to go there and present this.
I think they used to be based on the church down halfway.
June 14th, okay? So I'm gonna go and do it. Anyway, so if I could have a motion to sign this and present this, I would appreciate it. I'm moved. Motion made by Alan, seconded by Peter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Okay, so if you all sign this, it would be a great thing.
You're gonna wear the Boy Scout shorts and everything?
All right, next up will be the Town Administrator's Report, please.
All set.
All set?
All set.
Really?
All set.
Did you do anything this week?
Did you not work this week?